Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Ms. Treehouse.
Commissioner Summers.
Yes.
Okay. On our agenda, we have a special presentation proclamation I'll turn over to Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you very much. We are recognizing Virginia Summers this afternoon. There she is, I was looking for you. Ms. Summers, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, we're going to read a proclamation in your honor and then we're going to turn it over to you to make a few comments if you'd like. And so I will start out. Whereas Virginia Summers has served Hamilton County for over 42 years, growing the intellectual capacity of countless Hamilton County residents, and upon her retirement in 2022, was 81 years of age, the oldest of any paraprofessional in Hamilton County to date.
And whereas Virginia Summers began her career in 1979 with the PTA and assisting a classroom teacher at Wynton Terrace Elementary, after over 10 years ascending to the status of instructor assistant. And whereas Virginia Summers would be transferred to Rothenburg Elementary as a special needs teacher for several years.
And whereas after Rothenburg, Virginia Summers would transfer to Aiken High School as a paraprofessional and would serve there for over 20 years, assisting with various special needs classes. And whereas despite her retirement, Virginia Summers, through volunteering, still serves her local community of Dale High, where she now resides.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County recognizes Virginia Summers for her hard work towards the education of Hamilton County and does hereby proclaim the 28th day of May 2023 as Virginia Summers' Day in all of Hamilton County. Just one caveat, so the date here has passed, as you may have recognized, and it took me by surprise, but evidently this is the day that was also declared at the city, am I right? And so they wanted to declare the same day here at the county, so we know you celebrated that day, so we did want to be consistent there. And I do want to recognize that Ms. Summers has her family members here, Allen in particular brought this to our attention, but some of her children and family members are in attendance. Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the Board of County Commission, Hamilton County, and I also like to thank the Rothenburg School, the staff, which I'm astonished by getting recognized, you know, for doing my work. It wasn't hard, you know? You have to keep stepping, you know? There might have been some lifts and down, up and down, but you keep going, keep going forward. And I appreciate this, I'm astonished by getting all this recognition, which I didn't exactly know about to the last minute. And I appreciate y'all, I appreciate what you're doing for the county and for everyone to try to do their best in that job. And I thank everyone who decided to recognize me as a person of been 40, you know, working 42 years for the Board of Education, but I'm still working at home because I have some grandchildren, and I appreciate this, and I'm just so thrilled to be here this day. Thank you.
Stay right there. Stay right there, we've got some more great things to say about you, and then we'll come and take a photo. Vice President Treehouse.
I just am so grateful for your service, we should do more of this, recognizing our educators that have been in the field for so long, so thank you for everything that you've done for many thousands of kids whose lives you've touched.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summers?
Thank you. As we all know, education is so important and so essential, I'm sitting here thinking about if we had more Virginia Summers in the schools, how the schools would be right now, they talk about how they took prayer out of the schools and all that, you probably got a couple prayers in while you were working 42 years, but I'm just thinking if we had more of you right now in the schools, where our children would be, so thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
What all of y'all are going to say and what you're saying.
We got one more, one more, one more. I just want to join my colleagues in saying that we really appreciate you, and I'm sure all of the students that have come through knowing you and the nurturing and what you poured into them, and they go on and become citizens and grow up, and I'm sure they're able to pass on the things that you taught them as well. Today, we're just so excited to acknowledge you, there's people like you that's on the front lines, that's doing it, like you said, I'm just doing what I do, what I love, doing my job, but doing it so well, and so we're excited and grateful to be able to have this proclamation for you for the day that already passed, but many days to come. So we'll come around and take a photo. Thank you. can get on out of here, we still have to work. Thank you so much. Okay. Now we'll move to public comments, do we have any on Zoom? None on Zoom. Okay, so we have two speakers who've signed up to speak. Jill, is it Tomy or?
Yes.
Tomy, okay, come on up. How come you have the floor for two minutes?
Thank you. My husband and I own the property at the corner of Spring Oak, and we have two parcels. And when this first started to do the sewers, we were told that it would only, we would only be charged for the one property where the house is, and then later it was, no, you have to pay for twice or do something to consolidate. There's just been several times where information from MSD doesn't match what's coming for the county, from the auditors, of how much you can finance, what we can do, and the other thing is, our property, our sewage is in the back, so we have to come around the house, which requires a pump, and then depending on where the tap is, which we have no say in, we might need two pumps, and that cost is just very, very prohibitive for proceeding. So we are opposed to the sewer property, the sewer proposal going forward.
I think that's for the public hearing, well, I'm sorry, we'll still hold that for the record. We have anybody that's not for the public hearing? No, we do not. If my colleagues don't mind, can we go into the public hearing? We'll open up the public hearing, your comments will be taken, I'll move to the comments as she may, as part of the record of the open hearing. Okay, next person that's here to speak at the public hearing is Teresa Reynolds.
We live at 6501 Taylor, and we're part of the sewer project, but we are opposed to it because financial reasons, and the home has been in our family for over 65 years, and we feel like we're being forced to get out now because we financially are not going to be able to afford this. And the homeowners are on social security, they're fixed income, and for them to have to finance this and to take on this, I know it might increase the value of the home eventually, but for them right now, it's not so. So with that being said, also, there are several other issues, I agree with what Jill said, that there are so many financial figures that aren't fact, that we don't really know what the true budget of this whole project is going to be, and it's different for every individual that owns the house that's in the project. And also, you know, we're on bedrock, we're on rock, so it's going to be very hard to dig, and we're going to have to think about going down under the bedrock, and we also have flooding that takes place on Taylor Road, and I don't mean just little creek water, I mean three or four foot flooding that can take a car away when the creek beds flood, and it has already flooded five or six times, so, I mean, just this year. And just a couple of weeks ago, it flooded, like three times in just a couple of months. So what happens when they're doing this project and a flood comes? What happens to our property? Is it going to get washed away because they're in the process of digging? What's going to happen to our land? I mean, you guys have no idea until you see this flood, how, we have big pipes that go underneath the ground, so not only financially, but we're just opposed to it for several reasons, no facts, plus, we also have a working septic tank that Hamilton County forced us to put in in 2005.
Thank, I'm sorry, that's your last.
We still owe $10,000 on that septic tank.
Thank you, thank you so much, sorry, I have to, we have to keep time, Mark Hevers.
I'll do my best.
Oh, sorry, we're working.
You're like Bob Parker, yeah, come on down.
Come around, you can see us.
I'm for the project, I'm at 3850 Spring Oak Drive, and they've been saying the sewers were coming up this street for 40 years, and I think it's cleaner, I think that, don't they put the first cost on your property tax, the 12,000 beginning? Do we know the answer to that? Questions are?
They'll answer them after you get done.
Oh, okay. I also only see three properties on the whole thing that are meeting the standards that Hamilton County has put forward going forward. Like, if I had to put a system in, I would have to meet those standards, only three in this whole thing meet those standards right now. And I'm not trying to cause, I love my neighborhood, and I love the people in it, I truly do, they're great, and I'm not trying to cause a neighborhood fight, but this has been going on for five years, trying to get, and I don't know what they would make me do when the system fails, when they come in and start failing these systems, then, you know, your cost is going to be, it could, it'll differ for every property, I'm sure, but I know my neighbor paid $60,000 to put a system in before he moved. I just think having cleaner water going into our creeks is a good thing. It does benefit me, I think, because my system's old, I haven't been forced to replace it yet because they pass it, which I'm just waiting for that day when they say, oh, no, that'll force me to move, I won't have any other alternative but to move me and my mother out. And I'm not looking for anybody's sympathy or any of that, just want what's best for everybody involved, honestly. I don't want to divide the neighborhood, I don't want that to happen, because they're good people, they all are, but I'm for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have two people on Zoom.
I just requested that they're prepared for the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so we're not sure about that. I'll ask Director Christie, you come forward and... Thank you.
Commissioners. Yes, I'm going to have, Lauren DiGarcia is going to present for MSD today for the public hearing, and she'll introduce our other individuals here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Just pull up the PowerPoint. I'm Lauren DiGarcia with MSD, I'm with the Office of the Director, I assist with our assessment program in coordination with our wastewater engineering division, who manages the program as well as the individual projects. Thank you to the homeowners who are present today and have given comments so far, I hope that this presentation will clarify some of the confusion, if not, we are more than happy to sit down with you and clarify any questions, any outstanding questions you have.
Can you speak up just a little? Pull the mic up a little.
How's that?
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. In addition to Director Christie, I also have with me today Chelsea Thomas, who is the PM on this project, as well as Matt Spadari with our engineering division. So I'm going to go through a summary of the project and then turn it over to Hamilton County Public Health, who is also here today, to provide some additional information. So first background, this project is located on a portion of Spring Oak Drive and Taylor Road in Green Township, I'll show a map in a few slides, but it is between house numbers 3812 and 3898 on Spring Oak, and house numbers 6471 and 6512 on Taylor. The project was initiated by a citizen petition, the proposed sewer will benefit 18 parcels, 16 of which are, benefit 18 parcels, 16 of which are single-family homes, and two of which are vacant abutting parcels. The initial polling indicated 11 owners. The initial polling indicated 11 owners in support, which is 61%, four opposed, and three did not respond. Since the polling indicated project support by more than half of the benefited property owners, the petition was considered valid under MSD rules and regulations. And design services were authorized and funded by the board in 2019. So in response to the petition requesting construction of a local sewer to serve this area, MSD proposes to install approximately 1,300 linear feet of 8-inch gravity sewer with 18 laterals. The sewer laterals will run from the new sewer main to the private property line for each of the benefited parcels, and that is where the owner can connect to it. So just to clarify, none of the private plumbing or HSTS abandonment will be included or performed by MSD. The sewer would outfall, the new sewer would outfall to the existing MSD sewer in Taylor Road east of Spring Oak. At this point, if this project moves forward, we anticipate construction would take place between February of 2024 until April of 2025. So this is a map of the proposed project. You can see the benefited parcels are outlined in blue, and the proposed sewer is indicated in purple. So as you can see, flowing down Spring Oak Drive, a portion of Taylor Road, and outfalling, as I said, to an existing MSD sewer that's indicated in green there. Current status of the project. At this point, the project is, the design of the project is 100% complete. MSD has acquired one easement necessary for construction, and $30,722 of MSD funds have been spent on this project to date. In terms of total project costs, the total estimated cost of the project is $1,389,570. Using that estimate and under our current MSD rules and regulations, MSD would cover 85.4% of the total project costs. And the benefited property owners altogether would fund $203,000 or 14.6%. A couple important points to make about the assessment. It is strictly for the cost of MSD's public sewer project. Again, it does not include any of the work on private property, HSTS abandonment, private plumbing, things like that. Also, I'll talk more about it in a few slides, but interest, charges, and fees may apply that are in addition to the $12,000 assessment if the owner pays through their property taxes over 20 years. Thank you. This is the tentative assessment, so you can see how the assessed cost would be split up between the benefited properties. We have three properties that qualified for an HSTS credit, which is determined by Hamilton County Public Health based on the properties' existing HSTS. So that reduced the assessment below $12,000 for those properties. And all other properties are anticipated to be assessed $12,000. This is further explanation regarding how the assessed amount is determined. The total actual project costs would be divided by the number of benefited properties, so here, 18. The primary credit is then applied to reduce the amount. And the primary credit, excuse me, primary credit adjusts annually for inflation and is currently $10,100 for 2023. It'll likely be more when this project is ultimately assessed, if it moves forward, but that likely won't change the bottom line, given the total costs here. Secondary credit is then applied, if needed, in any amount necessary to reduce the assessment to $12,000. And lastly, an HSTS credit is applied, if applicable, and will reduce the assessment below $12,000. And that is how we determine the per parcel assessment amount. Again, this doesn't include private side costs and could include interest and fees if paid through taxes. I know I sound a little bit like a broken record, but just want to make that point extremely clear so folks are aware. So the, in terms of the timing of the assessment, it takes place in May or June after the construction of the project is complete. So for this project, that would likely not be until 2026. Owners will receive an early warning letter in March and then an invoice in May or June, and can pay as much or as little of the assessed amount in the initial 30-day collection period. And any unpaid balance must be paid through property taxes over 20 years. As far as what is next in this process, following the conclusion of this public hearing, there will be a mandatory five-day period for the board to accept written objections for the project, which will need to be addressed if received. The board will determine whether or not to proceed with the project. And if they do choose to proceed, there is a mandatory 10-day period after the board adopts a resolution determining to proceed, in which owners can appeal that decision. And if there is an appeal, that will need to conclude before proceeding with anything else. Then there is legislation to appropriate construction funding. Then construction would take place, currently anticipated for early 2024 through spring of 2025. And lastly, the final assessment of costs would take place after construction is complete, again, anticipated in May or June of 2026. At this point, I will turn it over to Hamilton County Public Health to share some additional information about this area.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Felicia Irwin, and I am the Director of Water Quality at Hamilton County Public Health. I am joined today by the Health Commissioner Greg Kesterman, in case folks have some additional questions that I am unable to answer. But I did want to just say that we feel...
Bring your microphone up.
Sure. Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
So I did just want to say that Hamilton County Public Health does feel that this project is a step towards improving public health and environmental health in this community. We recognize now that 16 home sewage treatment systems will be eliminated with this project. As mentioned earlier in the comments, only three of these systems existing meet water quality and code standards of today. The rest of them are legacy systems with antiquated technology. And add to that, 12 of them are passive systems. And what that means essentially is water is used in the home, that same volume of water leaves the system. So that could reduce retention time in the treatment process. And these systems just frankly don't have the technological capability to produce the water quality effluent that these newer systems can do, protect public health with the waterways. So we're talking about higher levels of ammonia, higher levels of E. coli and other bacteria that gets discharged into our waterways. And these are just direct discharging systems that just have an outlet that goes into a creek or a swale. And then in this neighborhood too, there are two collector lines that concentrate that effluent and point it to one single location, so two locations in this community. So those collector lines would also be eliminated with this project. So for us, we feel like it would be a benefit to eliminate these older systems.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else from MSD. We can take any questions that you have or further comment.
One other thing. There was a question. Do you have any answers to what was asked today?
In regard to the flooding issues? Or I know there were a number of things mentioned.
Flooding issues? Yes, let's start there.
Okay. Well, I will say that MSD deals in water, right? So that is not something we are unfamiliar with, doing construction and dealing with water. I don't know. Chelsea, do you have any specifics regarding this project and plans? Did you want to step up?
Not specifically, but I would say that when we do come up with our construction plan, when we have a contractor on board, they'll be going through the steps of, you know, understanding what the risks are in that area so that during...
Hold on one second. Ma'am, ma'am. I'm sorry. Yeah, we got to give that to her, and then you have to have a seat. Please. While we're talking. Yes, please.
So basically, overall, MSD, as part of our project process and our delivery service, we do work to kind of outline any risks that are in the area so that when we have a contractor on board, they can understand what those risks are and help design the way that they construct the project to mitigate any of those risks. So if there's issues with flooding in the area, then they'll have that in mind when they're working on their construction plan, so.
What about the question of affordability of senior citizens on fixed income? Does that factor? Do we have anything to help them? Social security? That's really real.
So we do have the $12,000 cap. That being said, I mean, we do understand that that is still a significant cost for many folks to handle. And what we can offer is the payment over 20 years in 40 semi-annual installments through the property taxes to address that. And, you know, I will say later on the agenda, we do have our final assessments for projects that have already been completed. And I will share something that happened in one of those projects. They did have CDBG funds that were awarded through Hamilton County Planning and Development to the township where the project took place. So they did have four owners who qualified and did receive some, I believe it's up to $6,000 to offset their assessment. So I will say there are some opportunities like that. And in terms of the private side work that is required or necessitated through these projects, I think Hamilton County Public Health may have information on that. So I'll just turn this over to them.
Yes, please. I think that's a concern because we're screaming affordable housing, and that doesn't mean...
Absolutely. And unfortunately, I don't have the answer, the solution to that problem. But I would just like to also point out that you guys, the county commissioners, have graciously put that $12,000 cap in place. And that's not guaranteed forever too. So we do have to consider that if a future sewer project were to go in later for these same folks, maybe they would still have, they would have to pay that difference or more of the difference. So there is that as a benefit. But also, Hamilton County Public Health, we do apply every year for an Ohio EPA grant. It's called the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And we have successfully gotten grant funding through that for the last several years. And that grant money can be used to replace septic systems or tie into sanitary sewers, depending on income eligibility. And those standards are based off of HUD grant eligibility, eligibility, excuse me, levels. So people can be eligible for 100%, 85%, or 50% of the total cost to tie into sewer if they apply and are eligible for this grant.
Are these two Zooms for this particular town hall or public hearing? Are they speaking on the public hearing? Megan Tepe? Are you there? Megan Tepe?
Yeah, hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
You have two minutes. Thank you.
So as in, or of not one, but two parcels included in the proposed project, I guess my base concern is that we're all being signed up to pay for something that not all of us want or need. Almost 90% of the septic system that recently passed inspection or they don't have a septic system at all because they're a vacant lot. Even though both of the vacant lots truly are not buildable, but Hamilton County, I guess, deems that they could be. I don't know if there's an opportunity to have those reassessed. But I'm also concerned that not all of the homeowners involved are aware of the cost that they'll incur with the project. I mean, the $12,000, the assessment, which will cost between $555 twice a year, $1,000 a year at least, after you figure in fees and interest rates, $10,000 to $20,000 to run the sewer line, tap-in fee, refinish your property after they dig up your yard and take down your fences. But really, since 2018, at least three of the homes involved have sold. There's one homeowner who voted yes at the time, not fully aware of the costs associated. And we've gone through precedent times with COVID, interest rates, costs, and our financial situations have just changed in the past five years. I honestly think that a new vote would be in order from all the owners involved. Even three of the homeowners didn't respond at the time. So how do we know? And I know one of the votes for yes at the time were from, you know, a couple who were flipping the house. So they voted yes because it didn't matter to them. They weren't going to live there. They didn't have to deal with the associated costs, so.
Thank you very much. Next, we got Derek Blasen gang. Are you here for the town hall? I mean, for the public hearing?
I am for City Hall.
Did she say Derek Blasen gang?
Yes. Are you here for the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I am. You know what? I won't waste your time. I just want to holler at you and say congratulations, Lita Rich, you're doing a really good job, Madam President. I'm very proud of you, right here from Atlanta, Georgia. I'm still tuned into these board meetings, and you're doing an excellent job for the people of greater Cincinnati and the state of Ohio. So I just wanted to commend you for the work that you've done over the years. And just to let you know to keep on fighting, I'm watching from a distance. Derek Blasen, government watchdog.
Okay, thank you. We're on a hearing. Patricia? What's your last name? I'm so sorry. Holbrock. Okay, Ms. Holbrock.
I apologize. I didn't want to do the public speaking, but I couldn't get anybody else to do it for me.
Okay.
I am in favor of the sanitary sewer system. I want to read a few points here. We believe that the outmoded and the substandard septic systems that are currently used on Spring Oak Drive and Taylor Road should be replaced with a sanitary local system for the following reasons. First of all, a majority of the affected property owners have requested that the local sewer system be installed. Second, most of these systems were installed over 30, 40, and even 50 years ago, and they are operating under outdated sanitation requirements which were in place at the time of installation. Third, only three of the 18 properties being considered for the local sewer system are currently compliant with the NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, regulations. What this means is that the effluent from all of these remaining systems does not meet current sanitation standards regulated by Hamilton County Department of Health. The effluent from these systems, which is considered unsanitary by today's standards, is being discharged into Taylor's Creek and into the creek at the cul-de-sac end of Spring Oak Drive. A sanitary sewer connection is readily accessible for this project by tapping into the existing sewer line on Taylor Road. Also, there is an MSD pump station facility within about 100 feet at the bottom of Spring Oak Drive. For all of these stray stated reasons and for many more, it's time for the properties included in the Spring Oak Drive Local Sewer Project to have the advantages of a truly sanitary sewer system. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I'll open it up now. I think that was the last speakers for the, that have signed up. Open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. I have one question. But before I ask my question, I do want to, and I think the last speaker just kind of hit on it. This is a project that the majority of the residents, I should say, requested. But I think it's important that public health supports this for health reasons. And I don't know if Commissioner Kesterman has any additional information related to projects of this kind. But my understanding from the descriptions is that we've got these systems discharging directly into a waterway in the community. And so these are the kinds of projects that I assume concern public health quite a bit. And there is an effort to, you know, little by little, try to chip away at some of these outdated systems. Or is that correct?
That is correct. In Hamilton County, we have about 19,000 sewage treatment systems in various states. We do offer an operation permit inspection annually. Felicia mentioned that during her comments. Those inspections are making sure the system works as designed. So in the basic system, you know, the sewage goes into a tank. It separates solids and greases, and the liquids go through. Oftentimes, they receive some aeration or some bubbling, and then are discharged into the environment. It works. It provides a certain level of treatment, but it's not the best. It doesn't meet the NPDS standards of today's world. That system, though, is allowed to exist under Ohio law, and it would pass our inspection. That said, on a day where the whole family's home, you're running the washing machine, you're running the dishwasher, as Felicia indicated, you're running the dishwasher, as Felicia indicated, water would exit that system in a quick fashion and would provide significantly less treatment. Sanitary sewer has been proven to be significantly more impactful for the environment and public health. And so public health always supports sewer projects. I know there are many considerations that you have to take in mind as you're, you're voting. Certainly, cost and senior citizen, affordable housing are all of those. But from a strictly public health perspective, sanitary sewer is absolutely the best option.
Okay, thank you. Yep. And the other question I had was related to, thank you, to MSD. Because we, as a county, and I don't know, I never thought to ask this question, how other counties cap the cost to the homeowners? Because the cost of doing the project is higher than $12,000. And so how, can you help? I didn't do the math. Can you tell us what the cost per residence is for this project? And I guess, follow up, do other communities cap this at $12,000?
I am not aware of another county sewer district in the state of Ohio that, that caps it. I mean, there may be projects that they don't assess at all, but I'm not aware of a, of a program as complex as ours is in Ohio. In terms of the cost, and I, my presentation isn't up there, but.
I just didn't get my calculator out quickly enough to.
Sure. So this is using our.
Where was up there?
This is using our estimated total cost, which is an estimate. But let me get back a slide. Just one slide. Should be so forward. It's titled tentative assessment. He's got it back there. But it is, it is, it's a, it's a little bit over $77,000 with our total estimated project cost. It's a little over. If you just took it and divided it by the number of benefited parcels and MSD didn't fund any portion of it, so it would be significantly higher if we did not cap it at $12,000.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think, I'll speak for myself, these are challenging issues because of the cost related to the homeowners. However, there is an obvious health benefit to getting folks on a more updated system. And MSD is covering a huge portion of the cost for the resident. And that ultimately, the, the community as a whole benefit from this project. But those homeowners will, in the end, benefit as well, given the, any kind of resale value or the benefit just to being on a more updated system. So while I am sympathetic to the idea of the cost being a burden, I feel like the cap has been our attempt to reduce that burden over a 20-year period where they can pay over that amount of time. And as was stated, it's about $500, $600 a year, I think, for the, the resident. So it's this balancing act that we have to do. But I appreciate the information. I appreciate the information from the residents as well, both for and against. It helps us try to balance this equation and make our decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. There was a 61% level of support. I heard, maybe it was Diana said, the standard for petitioning is 50%?
50% plus one.
Okay, plus one. Okay. So those other seven people that did not support it, they all have to accept it, basically? Because you have enough support to start the project?
That is correct. I mean, at that point, the board could choose to not move forward on the petition, but we have not seen that. So that's correct. I mean, in this case, as I said, we had four people that opposed, and three people were non-responses as well. So we really don't know what their position was on it. We count those as no's, though.
My other question, who owns a vacant property? You said there were two vacant.
There are two vacant parcels, and they are abutting parcels. So they are owned by an abutting parcel, I'm sorry, yes, an abutting parcel with a home on it. So essentially, these owners have two parcels, one with the home and one that's vacant right next to it. So under our rules and regulations, if it is buildable, we will lay a lateral for it, and they will be assessed for that parcel as well. Unless they consolidate their parcel into one, in which case we'll only lay one lateral, and they would only be assessed the $12,000. Or you can place a conservancy easement on the vacant parcel, which essentially means it's not able, it's not buildable anymore. You can't develop it. So we also would not lay a lateral for it and would not assess $12,000 for the vacant parcel.
Because I was surprised.
Hold on, ma'am. I'm sorry. I don't like to use the gamble, but the way the public hearings work, you get two minutes, you've sat there two minutes, and then the board members, they ask the questions. When the, when the public hearing is over, MSD will be available out in the hallway if you have some questions. But that's kind of how it works. So you've had your two minutes that you have presented to us. And now we're, we have a commissioner now who will be asking the questions of the people who have presented.
Thank you. Just finally, I wanted to say, I was just surprised at the $77,000 assessment on the vacant property, but you were saying there are other options that can be taken where you won't have to have that assessment if it's abutting, the other ones. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. I did have one, one of the people that testified talked about extra fees, the digging up, and who's responsible after you, you know, you come in and you dig it up? Because I've seen that on the street. You dig up, and then you say the people who own it have to put it back together. Is that how this works, or is that included in the cost?
So for this project, we've obtained one easement, which I believe was from a non-benefited property. So we would have compensated that person for any damage, and we will restore it. The rest of the project is in the public right of way. Do you want to?
We have to have you, I'm sorry.
I'll have Chelsea step up and talk more about that.
Okay.
Yeah, the sewer will be laid in the road, so we shouldn't be disturbing anybody's property except the portion where we are doing your lateral. So that would be the only part of this project that would be, possibly have some disturbance in your property. And then you already have a disturbance when you do, when they do their private side connections.
Got you, okay. So they won't have to worry. Okay, well, that was one of the questions that came. I agree with Vice President Dreehouse, it is a balancing. I would like to know, though, was this vote taken before or after COVID?
The polling?
Yeah.
That was in 2019, so.
So that's.
Pre-COVID.
I just feel like timing is really critical because we didn't have inflation and COVID and, you know, COVID hit people two ways. Their health, physical health, but also their economic health. And I just want to make sure that that's still the consensus out there.
I mean, I do want to just note that, you know, with these projects, I understand COVID, you know, was, you know, a big traumatic thing for a lot of people. But these projects themselves often take a long time, especially when you have to do easement appropriation or anything like that, that adds some extra time to it. And so oftentimes, you will see that the polling is a little bit, you know, seems like, I don't know, was that five years or so apart from this, this step of the public hearing?
I was just wondering, not to say you shouldn't do the project, but timing, have you, the person had asked about a double checking. Is that possible within these five days?
It is, but I think at this.
You know?
Yeah.
Or, you know?
It's possible, but we, at this stage, I think it would be up to the commissioners to decide if they want to do an additional polling.
All right. Any closing remarks before we close here? Mr. Little, you seem to be grabbing the microphone.
Yeah, just, just one quick comment as the board was talking about different affordability programs that have been put into place. One thing I don't think we hit on, but I think Lauren hit in her presentation, maybe just go into a little bit of detail on it, because it's something I don't know that anyone else is really doing. And that was years ago, the board was sensitive to the idea that people who had otherwise working and industry standard home sewage treatment system would get an additional credit that is applied before the assessment happens. So you have the cap, the $12,000 cap, but there's also an HSTS credit. So Lauren, I don't know if you could just go into that for just a quick second, because that was something that was worked on for a really long period of time to further reduce the cost for people who felt that it was unfair, that, hey, I've got this septic system, it's passed everything, and it's industry standard. Why am I forced to do this without some type of credit for that system? So.
Sure. So, and we do have three properties in this project that do qualify for an HSTS credit, which is the most I've seen on a local sewer project recently. But it depends on the type of system that you have. So like some folks have been talking about, oh, I just replaced my system. We paid this much. I mean, this is an acknowledgement of that and a, and a reduction in price in light of what they've spent. So it depends, it is determined by Hamilton County Public Health, and it does depend on what type of system they have on their property. But we have two properties that are having, are getting a $3,600 reduction on the $12,000 assessment. So it'll bring it down to $8,400. And then another property that will receive a $5,800 reduction, so bringing it down to $6,200. So I can't speak to where that figure specifically came from. There was a lot of negotiation between the county commissioners and to come to those numbers. And they've been set since 2014, I believe is when this policy went into effect. But why there's a difference? The $3,600 number is for systems that are still discharging, that they're discharging under that NPDS permit. So they're getting sampled, they have the higher effluent quality standards that they're having to meet, and they're being checked. So if they're compliant, then that's why they're getting the credit. The $5,800 number is, is going towards systems that don't discharge at all, where the effluent is absorbed into that property's soils through a mound or leach system or something like that. So the public health implication for those types of systems is very low. And we do recognize that these are significant costs. So Hamilton County Public Health is absolutely open to extending this policy internally. And for these folks, we would be willing to work through a variance to the Ohio Administrative Code to allow these people to continue to use their systems longer than, even after the sewer is installed, to allow them to continue utilizing the systems for a few more years, maybe five, 10 years or so, depending on if they are, they remain compliant, they're getting their samples, and there's no malfunction of the system.
Nor to do that, do we have to do something, or it's just?
That would be an internal. So the Ohio Administrative Code requires that anytime a sewer is available to a property, that that property must connect. And Hamilton County, our timeline is if it's a discharging system, it needs to connect within two years if it's operating. If it's malfunctioning and there's a problem, they have to connect within 90 days. And if it's an onsite system, then they have five years to connect. That's already given. So once the sewer project is finished, folks will still have an additional several years to come up with the funding or financial solutions that they need. But Hamilton County Public Health would handle it ourselves to give these folks additional time.
Okay. Commissioner Dumas, do you have any final?
Well, just, I really want to talk about what you were saying. I think it's a good idea as it relates to, it's been almost five years since the petition was done. And not only, I mean, through the pandemic and all of that, but has there been any change in ownership? I would like to know that. I mean, I don't know if you have the answer now, but, but, and I'm also thinking 61%, even though your threshold is 50% and one for the petition, plus one, I just think that's so, in my opinion, so low because of the disruption of families and all of that, that I would just feel much more comfortable if it was like 75% agreed. So I was just looking at the fact of what you were saying. Have things changed, have any, has anything changed? Are there any new owners there? Possibly not. But are they familiar? Do they know what the expectation is as far as this sewer? Because the numbers are low. Fifty, you know, 61% is not impressive to me. You still have seven families that did not want it. Are they the same families? So just, I don't know how you resolve that really, to be honest.
That's a good question. That's why I was asking, can we get a, can we get an update on it? How long does it take you to get an update?
My understanding is there are, excuse me, some parcels that have changed owners. I've heard three, I've heard five, so somewhere in between there. So there have been some changes. I will say, we are happy to repoll if that helps inform the board and make, you know, feel comfortable making a decision of whether or not to go forward. I will say, our rules and regs don't really address that. They really talk about that initial polling and determining whether or not it's going to move forward. And that is because MSD has, you know, sunk costs, sunk efforts, resources that we've dedicated to this. You know, that being said, we do see ourselves as a facilitator in this process, so not necessarily advocating for it or against it or anything like that, but this sort of on-demand and back and forth is difficult for us to manage.
I mean, I'll be honest, I'll be more comfortable. I mean, I wasn't even around when you polled. And now I'm here to vote on something. You know, and a lot has happened that usually doesn't happen. We don't usually have a global pandemic and those kind of things. And the fact that ownership, as Commissioner Dumas has brought up, ownership has changed. I do agree that I would, I'd feel more comfortable if they say, oh, 75% of the people, then it kind of gives us a little more, to me, it gives me a little more comfortability. But I will see with my colleagues.
Yeah, I, I know they feel, we've, we've been down this road before about the timing related to the poll and the actual project. And I think it precedes both of my colleagues when I asked similar questions early in my tenure here. And I understand that, you know, once you get, I want to, I'm reminded that this is a citizen-led initiative. This was not MSD asking for the poll. The citizens asked for the poll. And the majority said, yes, they want to do this and move forward. So then MSD moved forward and sunk costs into the design and the development of what we've got in front of us today. So I just, I'm reminded of that, because I've asked these questions in the past. The one thing I, I want some clarity on, so the project itself costs X number of dollars. MSD is picking up, what, 85% of the cost? The residents pick up the rest. It's $12,000 per parcel. The additional cost is the private side, the resident tapping in to the system. So, and I don't know, I am not clear on what public health just said, but if, if I'm a resident, and I have chosen, I didn't vote for this, my, my neighbors did, but I did not, I don't want to tap in. I've got a system that evidently is passing the Board of Health regulations at the moment. Do I have the option to not tap in? I still have to pay the $12,000, but I wouldn't have to take on the additional cost of tapping in. Is that an option or not?
I'm going to ask, oh, Commissioner Kesterman is up here, so I'll let him take that question.
Thank you for the question. So as far as process goes, MSD brings sewer to a neighborhood, or sometimes MSD brings a sewer down the road for another project non-related to a septic abandonment project. Once that sewer becomes available, Felicia referenced the Ohio Administrative Code, it is public health's requirement under the OAC to require connection to that sewer. And she shared the timeline. But anytime a resident has a problem, they're, we work with them. Now, sometimes they're non-compliant completely, they have a failing system. And so unfortunately, in those instances, we work with the prosecutor's office, and we work with them and try and bring compliance. But we have never kicked someone out of their house because of cost issues. It is a balance, because ultimately, we have to worry about public health and the environment. And so we are always working towards that end game of bringing connection. So when you look at costs, we have certainly looked at instances where an elderly homeowner is in a home, and their family is helping them through this, this process. They don't want to leave their home. They have a working system that has been working for 30 years. Still not the best system, but not a lot of discharge. In working with the prosecutor's office, we always take these facts into consideration. If you have one of those systems, I know that doesn't give you a warm, fuzzy feeling because there's always risks, but I, I think our office has done a very good job of taking into consideration all of those opportunities to work with homeowners when this comes available.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a question. Is this, it must not be a 911 if it took us from 2019 to 2023, so nobody, hopefully nobody died. So I'm wondering, what would a few, a little bit longer to get a reassessment? I mean, we obviously wasn't in a state of emergency, because I'm sure 2019 and we in 2023, we don't went through a pandemic and everything. And people, they've been using it through this. I mean, I'm not saying we don't want to, we always want to do the right thing, but, you know, we're at a point where a lot of people are at. I got to pay for my 911 right now, because $12,000, we throw it around, and sure, it's a small amount compared to all, you know, we got a billion-dollar budget, but the people at home don't have a billion-dollar budget. And yesterday's prices and expenses are not today's prices and expenses, as we all know. And maybe what I thought was great in 2019, when I had a little extra money in my pocket, might not be as great in 2023, when, you know, I can't go to the grocery store, my medicine went up and everything else, and social security is not going up. So I just, I know we have to have a balance, because definitely we want to keep their health. But obviously, their health must have been okay, because we didn't do it in 2019. I would have thought. I would have thought this project would have been moving in 2020, and it's community-led, but I'm hearing from some community people that said, hey, we'd like to take another look.
So very great question or comment. Sewage treatment systems are complicated. There's really no easy solution. They are very easy for a homeowner to think, I flush the toilet, sewage leaves, my septic is working. What further complicates it is they receive a passing inspection from my team, and I explained what a passing inspection means. And so, yes, as a matter of your policy, you certainly can and could consider extending it longer. And quite frankly, if you extended it another year, there probably is no immediate public health risk. The risk with sewage treatment systems comes into play when one fails to a certain point. There's no remedy. These are 30, 40-year-old, in some cases, 60, 70-year-old systems, which are a concrete tank that sits in the ground. If a homeowner didn't pump it out at a regular frequency, if the ground was acidic and started eating away at the concrete, those tanks are and do fail. And when they, when the tank collapses, when it falls in, there is no remedy for it other than replacement. And many of these lots, I'm actually not familiar with the street personally, but typically, these lots are small. They don't have a lot of space, and the replacement systems are extremely expensive. So today, the commissioners are considering a project to move forward with the cost to the homeowner of about $12,000. If the septic failed and there was no sewer coming down the street, the cost for a replacement system, if we allow for a discharge system, is about $35,000 to $40,000. And if you have a larger lot that could have an onsite system, those costs can be in excess of $40,000. And I have heard over the years, and complaints have come to various commissioner offices, that that's exorbitant, and if you look at other counties, it's cheaper. And it's true, but it's true because our soils are complex. When you walk outside after it rains, your shoes get really muddy and clay and bad. Other places, if you walk outside after a rain, the water goes into the ground, it's easily absorbed. And our poor soils, that clay soil means the cost for systems goes way up. It's more complex to get the water to go into the ground. So, yes, you could delay the project. Yes, you could consider other options, but ultimately, should the sewer, or should one of these septic tank fails, our team would have to ultimately issue orders for immediate replacement. We still ultimately have to work with that homeowner. There's not magically funds available to deal with the issue, but it becomes much more urgent in those situations.
Got you. Thank you. I don't profess to be an expert at it, but I know people watching, they would ask that. And someone would say, well, 2019, if it went down, you would have had to, or 2020, if it went down, 2021, but nothing's gone down so far. But I understand what you're saying. We've got to, we've got an issue that has to be addressed.
The one other thing I will add is, our team works closely with MSD, and when we are aware of a sewer petition project or when a homeowner starts one, we kind of look at our enforcement a little bit different until that project either passes or fails. Meaning if there's a septic that's getting by, we kind of pause on enforcement until this process ends because of a petition failing or proceeds, in which case, we wait until MSD designs the sewer and then work with homeowners and getting connection. I don't know anything about any of these properties, but it is another consideration that our team always takes into account when these types of projects begin.
Okay, so where are we? Yes, yes, please, come on up.
Trying to let others speak today and not jump in, but I just wanted to add one thing in light of the health commissioners' comments and just overall the questions about polling. And that is just to let you all know that we've been really looking this year, and we have an effort underway to evaluate the assessment process and the rules and regs that we established years ago, and really to consider whether continuing with a program that is driven by petition is really the best way to address these issues going forward. As you heard, Commissioner say, I think they're somewhere around 19,000 or so, HSTS is in our district. You can still construct a new home today and install an HSTS. They are legal. They, you know, there are many ways that they can be operated safely and meeting standards. So what we have is when we're, when we're doing projects like this, when MSD is doing projects like this based on a response to a petition, we are not looking at the areas that may be the biggest issue, whether it's environmental or a public health issue. We're not really doing it based on that priority because we're being responsive to where, you know, you have a community interest. So in a, in a project like this, we're investing MSD dollars. If it moves forward, it's over a million dollars. We're requiring the homeowners to put that money in, up to the 12,000. MSD is paying over, I think it's 85%, but both parties are paying, and the ratepayers are paying the balance. And then you have the reality that maybe some property owners aren't even going to connect for some time because they don't have a failing system. So, you know, so what we're seeing is that perhaps this isn't the best way going forward for us to address what are failing HSTSs. And so really going back and looking at what are the priorities and what should we, as a district, working with the Health Department, be trying to tackle and prioritizing those instead of waiting for petitions to come forward. And so I know that's a lot to think about, but our hope is to move forward with some recommendations later this year to really reconsider how we approach this. But again, I don't think MSD objects to anything the board wants to do here in terms of either repolling or moving forward under the current process that we have in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the clarity. So, well, commissioners? Oh, do we have to take any action? Okay. I'll make a motion. You got something to say?
Well, I was just wondering, what would the timeline be for repolling?
Chelsea just let me know that it would probably take us about a month to get the letters out to FOS, give them time to respond, things like that.
Thank you all very much. I'll make a motion to close the public here. Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you all. I guess we'll get together and decide which way we're going to go. So thank you all for being here. If you have to leave, we understand. We'll be back on this soon. Thank you so much. Thanks for everybody's input. Been very helpful today. Okay, now we go to commissioners, public comments and motions. Open up Vice President Drehouse. Yes, I am. I could start with that, yes. Sure. First, we all join, we lost a deputy and Sheriff McGuffey, our sheriff contacted us regarding Deputy Marcus Ziegler. He was only 36 years of age. He left behind a wife and five children. Deputy Ziegler was an employee of Hamilton County Sheriff's Office for nine months. Sheriff McGuffey goes on to say he was always happy and helpful, proud to be a deputy, and was also a well-known entrepreneur. Deputy Ziegler made a strong impression on us from the moment he started. His smile is unforgettable. He was also known for loving his family and wanting to leave a legacy they could be proud of, and he did just that. There will be a visitation for Deputy Ziegler, which will be on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Spring Grove Funeral Home located at 4389 Spring Grove Avenue. Deputy Ziegler will be honored in a police ceremony outside the funeral home immediately after the visitation. We, as a board in Hamilton County, we agreed to fly our flag that have mass in his memory. This is devastating and a huge loss and a huge hit for Hamilton County to be so young and to, to be gone so soon. And so we want to make sure that he will not be forgotten. With that, I'll open up the Vice President.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that forward. Yeah, this is a big loss. I mean, Deputy Ziegler stepped up and said yes to the call to serve the county, to serve as a deputy. He was on the force a very short period of time, and the death, as you say, is tragic. He was so young, he's, I think he had five kids. And it's just really a tragic situation. So I want to express my sincere condolences to the family and friends of Deputy Ziegler, and we are flying our flags at half-staff in his memory, in his honor. We will for the next couple of days, but thank you for the acknowledgement. And it's just, as I said, a huge loss for the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas, would you like to comment on?
I think you both have said it all. I'll just, as you will, pray for the family and especially the five children that were left behind, and I will be attending the service.
Thank you. Now we'll open up for comments.
Yes, thank you.
Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of things. I did represent the commission at the Tabito Palaku Ceremony. It was a general council meeting on Saturday night. This is a group of immigrants, primarily from Senegal, who are in Hamilton County, have, you know, bought homes, they're, they've got jobs, they're contributing to the county. And they invited me out to speak about what the county is doing and how we can be a more welcoming place for folks that are new Americans coming into the county. So it was a real pleasure to go out. It was a very interesting ceremony, and I was glad to have been invited. The other thing I did was represented the county with a proclamation at the Whitewater Shaker Village event way out on the west side, almost Indiana. But there is a Shaker Village, it's 200 years old, and there's this campus of buildings out there where the Shakers used to live. And so this was a commemoration of that, the village itself, and they're trying to renovate these properties because they want to preserve the history of the Shaker Village. So I delivered a proclamation signed by all three of us to recognize the Shaker Village and their efforts to preserve the history of that village. And then I will leave it to you, Madam President, to talk about the music Walk of Fame, the Black Music Walk of Fame event that was yesterday. And I will not be talking about the parades and events over the holiday, which were many numerous, and I know we all had our fill of Memorial Day events, but an important thing to memorialize and remember those who lost their lives in service to the country. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment related to the event that was today, where we raised the pride flag above the county buildings. We have a lot of county buildings. I think there are eight of them that will have the pride flag flying. We were out in front of the courthouse, which is one of those buildings. And this, we've been doing since 2019. We have not had a flag raising ceremony, though, until this year. And so we did it in collaboration with the city. They did theirs at 10:00, we did ours at 11:00. And so the pride flag is flying in the city and in the county to make sure that our LGBTQ+ residents, family, friends know that we celebrate them, they are welcome in this community, and we are here to support those individuals in Hamilton County. And thank you both for attending that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I attended the City of Forest Park at a library groundbreaking. They're expected to complete the library by the end of '24. And it's a $19.1 million development. I'm really glad that the library, the board on the library decided that they were not going to renovate, but they were going to build new because the library within Forest Park is so old and antiquated. So I was happy to be a part of that. And not only that, the City of Forest Park is on the move, and there are going to be other developments going on around there, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. I won't mention about the Black Music Walk of Fame celebration yesterday. It was great, and I'll let our president speak about that. And of course, as was mentioned earlier, the pride flag raising, I participated in. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you both. Wanted to also indicate, I also attended the groundbreaking for the Forest Park Library. I mean, it's a, it's a huge deal. It's a huge deal. And so excited to see the final opening of that. So that was really great. I was excited to also be there and join. Also, wanted to say that I also attended the 5.3 relief bus and reentry one-stop. It was at Sharonville Convention Center. So I'll say this to Sharonville. When people say, are you coming to Sharonville? I think we did a lot at Sharonville and spent money at the Sharonville Convention Center. So that was really great. It was a great attendance. A lot of people came out to get the reentry services, and Trina Jackson and her team, as well as Trevina and her team. It was just a great, great thing. It was really, really great, well-attended. A lot of people got help. So excited to be there. Also, in addition, Memorial Day celebration, I was invited and was happy to give a speech at the Judge Robert Kraft Memorial Service for Jewish War Dead. And that was a powerful program, and that was at the Cove Dale Cemetery on the west side. So Jennifer Branch and I were the two speakers, and I was happy to join and be a part of that in commemoration of those who have served. In addition, I think it's a pretty big deal. We have passed resolutions to have the flag raised, but to have the first flag raised today. And I want to thank Vice President Drehouse for organizing that today. Did we do it last week? It just seemed like it was just yesterday. Beyond imagination. Was that last week? We got so much going on. I got to say it again. It was just, I mean, boy, we have it going on. We got a lot of great things happening. So I was happy to join, Mr. Dumas, on that. And then, I'm very excited, the City of Black Music Walk of Fame. The grand opening is Saturday, July 22nd. I want to thank Hard Rock Casino. We started last year partnering with them for Black Music Month because June is also Black Music Month. And we had a great kickoff announcing the, this year's inductees. We have some powerful inductees that the committee has brought forward. This year, we also acknowledge those who will be in the Walk of Fame for the categories of top music influencers, as well as their albums being featured, because it's just going to be a whole interactive experience. I call it edutainment. You'll be able to get educated and entertained at the same time. And so we have over 60 others from our southwest Ohio who will be included and acknowledged, and we were able to acknowledge them with medals yesterday. So we fielded the Hard Rock, and people who are from here, some people flew back in town. They came in from California and other areas. They flew in to be a part of their hometown. In addition to that, we also have our inductees. I don't know if we have a slide of them. We don't? Okay. So our inductees this year will be Felipe Nguyen, who was the lead singer for The Spinners. It will be Louise Sharpshire, the original writer of the original version of We Shall Overcome, where here, Dr. King was with her when she was writing it. We also have an honorary star for James Brown because he recorded his major hits right here in Cincinnati, and he discovered Bootsy Collins and so many others. So we're excited to have the Godfather of Soul going in. And we have the group, The Deal, the original, all the original members, including people who may know Babyface and L.A. Reid, who will be also here for the original members. So those will be our four inductees, super-duper excited. They'll be joining the other class. That'll give us 12 people, and then a number of almost 60 other people who are from this area will have acknowledgements. So we, it was just a great thing, a great star, studded affair. But I do want to acknowledge one specific person. His name is Frank Payne Jr. You can see him at the bottom. He's got his hand up waving. He's 101 years of age. He's a jazz extraordinaire, and he said to me, I never thought I would live to see it. I will finally have some permanent recognition that my great-great-grandkids will be able to see and other, he calls everybody his great-great-grandkids, will go on in music. And he came in a wheelchair at 101 years young. And he came in a wheelchair at 101 years young. So he said, "I'm hanging on for July 22nd", and he's getting his outfit together. So I'm so excited about that. But there were a lot, few people that came in, in wheelchairs and walkers, who've been around for such a long time and are happy to see this type of recognition that they can pass along. So again, I want to thank everybody from the administration that was there and helping, and all of the folks that were helping out to help put this together and this event together. Again, thank you to the Hard Rock team and to LAI Communications and her team and so many other folks that helped put this together. So it was great, and we all had some great dance moves. And I think all of us were great, but who stole the show in dancing? I would say Joe Santangelo, he's been putting on the music festival for 52 years, and no one has ever, he's actually a classical pianist, classically-trained pianist. A lot of people don't know that. But no one has ever seen him dance, and he was dancing the night away. And all we needed, Jeff, we had your song ready, so get your moves right now, just kidding. Jeff's over there like, "Please, don't call my name, don't get me up here." But it was very exciting. And congratulations also to Bishop Bobby Hilton, who is one of the top music influencers as well. So it was great, thank you. July 22nd, everybody, put it on your calendar. We're asking everybody to wear white, because it's our grand opening, and we're excited. And we also announced that the Ohio Players will be performing live as well, this completely free, on Saturday, July 22nd, 12:00 noon, indoor and outdoor, next to the Andrew Brady Music Center. So that's all I have in my comments for the day. I think that's probably enough, I mean, I'm still exhausted. But thanks to everybody that came out. Okay, now we'll turn it over to Mr. Ludo.
Madam President, I know we have a fairly extensive regular agenda today, so I've only got one by-leave item, and I will avoid any additional comments. The item by-leave one in your packet, this is a resolution approving and authorizing the administrator to enter into a development management services agreement with 3CDC and an agreement with the City of Cincinnati. This is a development services agreement between the county, 3CDC, the City of Cincinnati, laying out the roles and responsibilities of all of those parties as we assess and advance the convention district project, which includes the convention center, the hotel, and the broader convention district. This was the same item that we discussed in rather specific detail back on May the 9th. The primary change, you will recall that there was a blank at that time related to the funding agreement between the City of Cincinnati and 3CDC. They have subsequently and recently agreed on language for the city's provision of pre-development costs to 3CDC. You'll recall, the city is funding those pre-development costs and has budgeted for those. We were waiting on that language before formally advancing this. I thought we might have it sooner, which is why we brought this in early May. But we do have that information, and it is included now in the agreement. It's a pretty perfunctory reimbursement line that just says that 3CDC will make, draw requests on the $7 million that the city has advanced, and includes an attachment that shows the different budget categories for that. So with that, Madam President, commissioners recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Dree.
Thank you. Yeah, we've had long conversations about this item, and so I am happy to support it. I think that this approach to the development of the campus around the convention center, the Millennium Site, the garage, where the hotel will be, is the right approach, where we're doing it in conjunction with the city, with private partners, so the entire cost is not borne by government, and doing it in a way that makes sure that all the elements in the district are working together instead of having disparate projects down in this part of town. I mean, it needs this kind of energy, it needs this kind of commitment from the city and the county, and so I'm happy to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. I have no questions, just a comment, I'm in support of by-leave one as we move forward to try to move our projects forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions on this particular document. On page three, is that the part that the city put in? On the page three item?
The item, assuming we have the...
Engagement.
Page six...
Okay.
Is the pre-development fund section that has been inserted since that time.
Okay. I had a question on page three. Services to be performed. And then item number three, and it talks about the TOT funds. Can you, and it's in bold, it has the city's component in bold, can you interpret this? Because I want to make sure, because it looks like it's putting the funding model inside of, are we voting on the funding model today?
We're not voting on the funding model. This section, I'll just read it for transparency, says, "While finalizing the Duke Energy Center financing plan, managers review and analysis of the city's TOT and the county's TOT shall consider the existing and continuing obligations of the city and the county with regard to the use of their respective TOT funds." So in other words, recognizing that those funds are currently committed to certain things, that they want to make sure that they, as they're talking about a financing plan, that they are remembering that there are other things that TOT is currently going towards and will need to consider as a financing plan is developed. Further, it says, "As to the city, it shall be limited to the city's 1.5% TOT levied pursuant to the city's ordinance. The city's 1% TOT levied pursuant to a second ordinance, so the 2.5% TOT..." It says, "For the avoidance of doubt, in no event shall a proposed Duke Energy Center financing plan rely on an assumption that the city's 1.5% TOT levied pursuant to a separate ordinance, as amended, will be available for financing." That is a TOT that goes specifically to other purposes. "As parties acknowledge and agree that revenues from that portion of the city's TOT are necessary to defray the costs of operating, maintaining, repairing, and improving the Duke Energy Convention Center on an ongoing basis." So the city has multiple TOT, occupancy tax funds that they've put in place, and one portion of that goes specifically to operating and maintaining the Duke Energy Center, as opposed to being used for debt service. So that's what that's referring to.
Okay. And then I wanted to just make sure, and that's not necessarily for today, but I'd like to get, my understanding is that the Convention Center will have to be shut down, and there are a number of things that have been booked. And then also, there will be some loss of revenue between that time. I'd like to know what happens at that time. Are people losing jobs? Are we, who's paying for these conventions? Because once they're booked, they have a contract and they want to get paid. Who's paying for these? And then we have some ongoing contracts that we've had for years, some, I think the educational group?
The local shows.
Hard to get that educational, yeah, I was in, I was out at Sharonville, and some of them are moving to Sharonville. However, Sharonville said there's some, they just can't get the bigger ones, which is why we need the big Convention Center. And even he was concerned. Are these going over to Kentucky? Are they going, where are they going, Indiana? We need to know, what is that financial situation? Because we're talking possibly 18 months or more regarding this. So I think that's something I would like to know in addition, not today, but something that we can get...
Happy to provide that. I will tell you that we have been in discussions between the City 3CDC and the CBB specifically on that very issue. And I know that the CBB has been very direct about, especially as we're talking about construction potentially starting on one month versus another adjacent month, that if there is a, and there has been discussion by the CBB, that there are large, very large conventions booked for one month. So if we could just slide it a couple of weeks, that would avoid having to reposition a large convention, and so 3CDC is working with the CBB very directly on that. But I'll get the board a more formal report on that, just on how all that works.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, because when you've got people in the industry asking me that question, I mean, this is Sharonville Convention Center, I mean, he's been in the business for a long time. For him to bring those kind of questions up, I think are critical. One of the things I wanted to highlight in here also, is there a 3CDC? I saw there was a fee. There's a fee of, what, a million dollars? Or something that they would receive?
There is, there is pre-development, there are pre-development funds that are being allocated by the city to 3CDC, and that is laid out in the, in section, on page six, in, let me highlight the section, page six, section two, and that is further referenced in Exhibit E. That is the budget that the city has laid out in agreement with 3CDC on how those funds can be allocated. And yet there is a pre-development fee in there as well.
What's that fee? That would go to 3CDC?
I would assume, yes, that goes to, that would go to 3CDC to, for, most of these other things are for, you see, architecture engineering fees, indirect pass-throughs. The fee, it would be directly of the development, or the pre-development fee for 3CDC itself.
How much?
It's 1, I'm sorry, 1.078 million.
Over a million dollars. The reason I bring that up, when we get these projects, it's very important, because it's on YouTube. And I specifically asked this question, and there was some, I'll be, it was some resistance. It was like, you know, "How dare you ask me this?" But they finally came out, and they kept saying, "We're not getting any money. You guys, everybody's begging us. They begged us to do it." I don't know who begged, I'm still trying to find out who begged them, because I know I didn't, but, because I thought we should have did RFP like we do for everything else. Every time we do something, you usually tell us, "The prosecutor office is requiring an RFP. We got a RFP out now, something we haven't even decided if we want it." But even on some real estate to move, they said we had to do an RFP. Grants, RFP. In a minute, we're going to hear some people that came up that were going to approve grants, RFP. It wasn't like we had somebody who already had experience doing this. I had asked them, "Had you ever done a convention district? It's on YouTube." "No, we have not." And in there, I asked, "Are you going to get some money for this? No, we're not. You guys begged us, somebody begged us to do it. We're doing it as a favor. Favors are usually free, but we're doing it as a favor, and then we're not making a dime." And if you don't believe me, you can go to YouTube, and we've got the clips to rerun it. And I think, Mr. Ludo, you even saw some of those clips. So we want to make sure the messaging is right. We can't go to the taxpayers, whether you're booking a hotel or not. And so you've got one way on video, "We're not doing a dime." And then you go into the fine print, which I don't have my glasses, but the fine print, and you're getting a million dollars. It doesn't matter if you're getting a million from us or a million from the city, because if it was just the city, the county wouldn't have to make, wouldn't have to sign anything. So somewhere down the line, there's always some cost. And I've been trying to get to the bottom of it. So I do want to acknowledge that in here, it's a million dollars that they will be getting for their services. I'm not saying they shouldn't get anything, but let's all present something as we're doing a favor, it's a charitable thing for us, y'all begged us to do it. Nobody's begging you to come and take some prime real estate and have an opportunity to develop it. So I just wanted to highlight that, because I asked it, and everybody got mad at me. "What are you doing, asking questions? Let's just go with it." No. I asked that question, and they said, "They don't, they're not going to make a dime." And in this, they will be getting a million dollars, and it'll be more. It'll be amendments and so forth. This is just on the Convention Center. The reason that I, today, will have to go no, is because there's a sentence I asked, and this talks about, "Are we willing to work together and make changes?" Now, the city held it up and said they needed some additional language, and this thing was held up, until they got language that they were comfortable with. I asked, because when you read it, I said, "Well, why can't we just do a regular contract? Why do we have to have almost two pages of a public relations marketing materials for 3CDC?" I asked them on one, they said that they have a track record of prioritizing diversity, equity, and inclusion. I said, "That's subjective." Robert Bell hasn't issued us a report saying 3CDC has met these tracks, so they're number one with diversity. And I'm out in the community, and the people are telling me like crazy. I even asked the, I forgot his name, the number-two guy at 3CDC that presented to us, "Do you have any black ownership in over the Rhine? Go to the YouTube." He said, "No, we do not. Got some rentals, where we collect rent, nothing in ownership." So why would I go along with a thing that has no, 3CDC has a track, I don't know if they got a track record or not, why would we sign on it? They got a track record. And the people are saying, "That's not true." They got one deal for one of these properties, Transip, I think it is. The person that came in, they gave him a three-year deal, and then they can own the property. I've got at least two African-Americans who've come for the same deal. And they told them, "Oh, we don't do those deals anymore, but you can rent from us." So why would I sign on, which this has nothing to do with the Convention Center projects, I don't know why it was in here, 3CDC has a track record of priority? I don't know if it's a priority or not. And I asked, "Can we get that one thing out, and then I can probably go along with this?" But I was, they didn't want to take it out. So how are we going to work together if we can't, if the city, they can get stuff in and out, but when we show up, we, I ain't allowed to ask questions, I'm angry. "How dare you? Take it or leave it." And so the day I got to leave it, on behalf of all these black-owned businesses that have told me, who've had issues, and said they're not getting the same type of deal, and they can't get ownership. And all I asked was to take that page two, section I, that has nothing to do with the other part of the deal. And the last thing is, let's just be honest, if you come, you're going to make some money, tell us there's a fee upfront. Don't tell the people that you're doing it as a favor, you're not going to charge one dime. So those are the reasons that I had to go no. I wanted to try to get the, yes, Mr. Ludo, I appreciate you, I told you this. I said, "Hey, if we can get this out, I can go along with it." They don't want to. And it's not the first time. And if they're doing that to me, and I'm a commissioner, president of the commission, what does the little guy, they don't have a chance out here. A little small business owner, a little construction company, they don't have a chance. I don't care how many events you have, meet and greets and all that, they don't have a chance. We're looking for partnerships, ownerships, and to be equals when we come to the table, equals. So that's, that's my issue with this. So I'm going to have to vote no, but I will call, somebody else got it?
I will move to pass by-leave item number one. Commissioner Reese?
No.
Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry, just if I could interject into where a discussion might have previously been in the, in the, in the motioning portion, if that's okay?
Which motion?
Well, someone, someone motioned, there was a second, and so...
You want to be on discussion of the motion?
Yes, just discussion.
Okay, I'll reckon.
That's, that's okay. Okay, so I just wanted to say that from the county's perspective, you know, as I look at the, that section, Commissioner Reese, I understand your perspective on it, but the track record of prioritizing diversity, I think from the county's perspective, it was reflective of the projects that we've done, like on Memorial Hall, et cetera. So there's clearly going to be policy differences in terms of how far is enough and what is prioritizing diversity, equity, and inclusion for each commissioner. So I, it was language that was agreed upon by the three parties, so I just, I don't want it to sound as if the county staff was opposing that line. We were supportive of it specifically because of the, of our past work with 3CDC on projects we've won. So I just wanted to explain.
But Mr. Ludo, with all due respect, you're the administrator, I'm a commissioner. And for some reason, I was going to try to take it easy today, but for some reason, I feel like I always got to, you come in as kind of always challenging me on the other side. And I kind of feel a little strange, because you're, before I got here, with your own leadership, your track record wasn't that good here. You did $16 million in one quarter, and only spent $1,400... You did 16 million dollars in one quarter, only spent 1,400 dollars before I got here. So to jump up and say, I wouldn't maybe take your opinion with 3CDC over someone like myself, who is African-American, who's been out here with the people, who hear the people, who sent me here to do something different. And they're saying, this is what's going on. This is what's happening. But for you to say, well, each of y'all are individual and everything, yeah, I understand that. Each of us individually, we have to elect you to be here. But every time I show up, you take the opposite position. 3CDC getting more help from you than sometimes I get. So I was going, I mean, I really think it was inappropriate for you to interject when we was getting ready to vote, for you to come in and take, well, I agree with 3CDC. Well, maybe you need to work for 3CDC. But the people that I'm telling you about, they have these, these are real concerns out here. And the person got up and said, I asked him, do you have any African-American ownership of these buildings? Where you're getting all these government discounts that they get? And the guy said, no. So I'm going by what this 3CDC number two official on YouTube said. So we can't jump up and say, fantastic, you got a record of zero ownership in over the Rhine? That used to be a predominantly black neighborhood. Now, you got some people renting, but back in the day, we owned the buildings when we did, when we had barber shops. Blacks people owned the, the buildings when they had clubs. They got a rental program going. And you jumping up telling, oh, man, they did a fantastic, we wasn't, we ain't been doing a fantastic job yet. We're working on it. So I just have to say that because this is, this is deep with me. This ain't just some willy-nilly stuff. I've been out there in, in this, I've been in this business with conventions. I've been, I've been a deputy director of conventions. I've also come from black entrepreneurship. And I'm talking to people all the time. And everybody just saying the same thing. They just can't get to these fancy rooms. They can't get to these big-time rooms. So they sent me. So I just, I, I disagree with you. And I hope that you shouldn't be doing the messaging. We, it's a lot of work that needs to be done. And nobody's getting an award when you got zero black ownership in over the Rhine. When you take someone who's not African-American, you give them one deal where they can get a piece of property, give them a three-year deal on the property, and then they get to buy the property. African-American come, you say you can't buy the property. We don't do those kind of deals anymore. That used to be called redlining. Now they show up, we can get you a rental program. And then, by the way, maybe after 12 years, we can sell you the property. That's nothing to clap about. That's nothing to be proud about. And I'm not going to sign my name saying you did a fantastic job. So I just don't think we, Mr. Ludo, you in a position to talk right now to them about what they did in the past, when we're trying to correct what the county's been doing in the past. So with that, I want to get back to voting. And do I need to, you've already had a second and a motion. Let's call the question.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No. All right, moving to the calendar, we have another by leave. Mr. Dumas, do you want to introduce this by leave? I know we worked.
I can do an intro on that, on the chair. Right after we reclaimed the Black History Month, there was Lydia Morgan actually approached us about Juneteenth and the importance of Juneteenth and the, the end of slavery, even though a lot of the slaves didn't find out until much later that they were free. And so because of that, we started to celebrate, the county started, started to celebrate Juneteenth holiday. And I have, if you.
Yes, you can go ahead and introduce.
Okay, thank you. And so the resolution just indicates, whereas on September 24th, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County adopted a resolution declaring Juneteenth an official paid holiday in Hamilton County. Whereas this resolution will authorize the Hamilton County Commissioners to raise the Juneteenth flag Thursday, June the 15th through Tuesday, June the 20th, 2023. And whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners are asking that this date be a time to commemorate the ending of slavery in the United States. Now therefore be resolved by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners that the Juneteenth flag will be raised Thursday, June the 15th, 2023, at the Hamilton County Courthouse and Topertune Center for County Government and will remain raised until Tuesday, June the 20th, 2023. And this is signed by all of us.
Awesome. Vice President Drehouse, open it up.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm supportive of this. Commissioner Dumas, though, I wish I had caught this before, that reading, because I did read this before the meeting. Is the flag going up at all the county buildings?
No, I was going to ask that when I read it.
Yeah.
Because it really should be.
Yeah, it should be. So I, I don't know, I don't know what we've done in the past. I have not, I haven't been around, because there are eight of them. So I don't know if the, the flag is going up at all eight. I think it should. So I don't know if this precludes that or if we need to amend the language to allow for that.
Yeah, Vice President Drehouse, that's a good catch on there. Can we amend this to say, you have the Topertune government in all county buildings? Can we just amend and say?
Yeah, should we just?
Oh, we might not have enough flags.
Well, and even if we weren't this year, I think we need to be on record as saying we'd like it to fly. And if we've got time to get them, then we get them. If we don't, we do it next year. But I do think we want to be on record as saying that I think the intention here is to fly the Juneteenth flag at all the county buildings.
Yes.
And not, not so much these, only these two specific buildings.
So why don't we say, after 2023, at all the county, at the Hamilton County Courthouse and all county buildings?
Whatever language you're using for the pride parade, or pride flag.
Sounds good.
Everybody good with the amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
And all county buildings? And then it'll, just like you said, based on what we have and then we.
That's right.
Correct it.
Just to give some direction and see if we can get.
Sounds good.
I apologize, I wish I had caught that before the meeting.
No, that's fine.
Do you want it now or?
We want it now. So to say after it says, Hamilton County Courthouse and will replace the rest, and all county buildings.
Okay, we're going to go write up a new resolution.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do.
So you want to come back to this?
We'll come back to it, yes.
Is this okay?
Is that okay, Michael?
Your comments, we're okay to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on then. We'll come back to that, that was a great catch. Our engineer is here, Mr. Beck. You're light today, you don't have much on here.
I don't, I don't. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before I do get to my item, I would like to report back to the board. Commissioner Dumas had asked me about two weeks ago at the meeting to review the Bridge Forward proposal and report back. Since that date, ODOT, KYTC, City of Cincinnati, myself, the Federal Highway Administration, and Bridge Forward had a meeting. And there was some modification that Bridge Forward was going to make to their plan. And I also met with them individually, along with Holly Christman. So I don't have your report yet, but we are working on it. I'm waiting for them to get their final product before I give you a thorough review on it. So I just wanted to report back to you so you knew where that stood.
That's for sure.
Thanks.
We are working on a resolution. I don't know, Mr. Ludo, are we working with Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Yeah, so the board received a copy of a draft resolution this morning. So if the board wants to review that, we can discuss it in staff meeting on the 13th for potential passage on the 15th, if that works.
Okay, and do we need for that to give?
I've reviewed that.
Mr. Beck has been a part of that review process.
Okay, we'll put it on there so everybody can.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Just one item. Item number one is a resolution approving the list of projects for the 2023 municipal fund program. We held a public hearing for that back on April 13th in this quarters. The funding for these projects comes from the Municipal Permissive Auto Tax Fund. You should have the list of, there is 10 projects totaling $2,137,316. It was recommended and was part of the public hearing. This is, we are asking for approval of that list of projects.
Okay. All right, I'll open up, Vice President Drehouse.
Questions?
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
All right, you got off easy. No, just kidding. All right, I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ludo, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have a couple, we have a pretty extensive, regular agenda. The first item on here is maybe our last youth resiliency? Do we have any more coming, Sarah?
This is, this is our last one, this will finalize all of.
So Ms. Adams, Ms. Adams will walk us through.
Not so soon. No, just kidding.
And then Megan Guthrie will take us through, we have, we have a couple of other folks. But we'll turn it first to Sarah for youth resiliency.
Yes, this is, as Mr. Ludo said, this is our last one under youth resiliency. So this will finalize, this will be our 27th organization that we are requesting approval for. And that will bring our total to $3,938,987.16 for all 27 organizations that we would be awarding fund for the youth resiliency grants to combat social isolation for youth ages nine to 19. So we are seeking approval for item number two, which is a resolution with Refresh Collective for $171,160. Refresh is a print shop training program to learn employable skills and acquire certifications in the scope of music and arts. This expansion will be focusing on the arts side. The program will expand their youth workforce immersion and development program to serve 30 additional high school students with low to moderate income, have special needs, and attend either Lighthouse Community School or one of the Cincinnati Public Schools. The expansion is adding 30 additional students with two additional schools with the ability to graduate from the program with experience in all areas of screen printing and embroidery while being immersed in recovery-rich environments. The program expansion will include hiring a new production manager, which Holly and I had the pleasure of meeting earlier this week along when we went to Refresh and had a visit with them. And we were able to actually see kind of what they do with their program, which was wonderful. So we're going to try to get out a little bit more to see some of these programs because we have a lot of many great ones. So they're going to hire that new production manager to implement the programming and the purchase of additional equipment to allot for more students. And we have Mr. Lee Harrell, who is the director with Refresh here, to answer any questions with me that you may have.
Welcome.
They also met my dog.
The sweetest dog ever.
Hi, I'm Lee, how are you?
Highly.
Do you have any questions?
We may. Let's open it, Lee, did you have anything you want to say before we open up?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for the administrative side of handling these funds. I could never do what you do, but I love working with our students. I love working at Refresh where we try to bridge the gap, the kind of, the equity gaps that we see in the availability for high-quality arts programming to those who are underserved or living in low-income families or poverty, poverty-affected areas of our cities.
Awesome, I appreciate it. Vice President Drehouse?
No questions. Just to say thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, I think a skill set, I think is really critical in this, as we go into this uncertain type of world, that our kids and I need to have more than, different skill sets that they can fall back on or be able to make a career out of, or own a business. We've got to get to some of those technical things where they can maybe make money while they try to go to college, those kind of things. So just excited about them being able to learn a different trade or skill set.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do, we need a lot of printing and embroidery. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's not normal, but that's all I have today.
That's it? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. I believe Megan Guthrie will walk us through, I think you've got items three through six, correct, Megan?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you so much. It was also so great to see Refresh here. They're also a recovery-friendly Hamilton County employer. So they're doing some great work in the space. So the first two items that I have are grant-related. So the third, resolution number three is authorizing for a sub-receipient agreement for Prevention First. This will be part of our $739,000 Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant to provide the Prevention First Student Survey to survey perceptions of use and harm in the schools. So this subaward will fund a program coordinator, supplies the survey costs to survey Hamilton County schools as well as marketing and media. For this one, we are looking at roughly $112,000 per year over the course of the three-year grant totaling the $336,000. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that grant.
Sounds like more good news, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, this, this one is so important because it informs what we know about young people and what they're doing related to drug use. So I, Prevention First is just a very well-organized, very good organization, so I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Are there certain criteria that has to be met like the first year in order to get the second year?
Of the grant funding?
Yeah.
Not, not for the Department of Justice grants. We have a set of outcomes that we, when we applied for it, had established for ourselves. Not necessarily anything we have to do from year to year, but in terms of overall completion, we do have outcomes there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all, yeah?
Okay. Can we go to the other ones?
Sure. Yeah. Resolution number four is for another sub-receipient agreement for Addiction Services Council. This is part of our 900,000 Bureau of Justice Assistance Improving Substance Use Disorder Treatment for Adults in Reentry. So this grant in particular provides the MOU D induction medications for opioid use disorder. This subaward is going to fund one licensed chemical dependency counselor full-time, two full-time peer navigators, as well as some facilities and administrative overhead costs for implementation. That is roughly $175,000 per year over the course of the three-year grant for a total of $528,373.2 for Addiction Services Council.
Any questions, Vice President Drehouse?
Very supportive of the pure support portion of this one especially. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you. All right, number five. So this, this is not necessarily associated with any particular grant. There are no funds associated with this MOU. But this is an MOU between the Office of Addiction Response and Hamilton County Public Health to put a peer navigator aboard the Safe Services Van. So this is their stigma-free access for everyone, essentially their Surinx Services Exchange Program. This would be providing one of our deflection peer navigators under the office on, onboard five days a week. They would be primarily providing linkage to care services for substance use, mental health, homelessness, other social determinant of health and quality of life concerns. And so the grant, the salary and grant funding for that navigator is already paid elsewhere out of other projects that we have. So no dollars associated with that, but MOU between Public Health and the county.
Commissioner Dumas?
I mean, Vice President Drehouse?
You have any?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. All right.
Perfect. And then number six is a resolution authorizing the county administrator for $50,000 MOU between Public Health and Administration. This is our first MOU under the One Ohio Local Dollars that we had talked to you about last week. This is to provide primary care aboard the Safe Services Van. So this would be $50,000 through September of 2024. And this would be primary care services, so staffing, equipment, preventative healthcare, health screenings, immunizations, testing, and any common illnesses, chronic conditions, that sort of thing, to be able to provide that support on, on the van.
Okay. Vice President Drehouse?
No questions.
Well, I was just wondering about the Safe Services Van, is that our county and or what agency is?
Public Health.
Public Health, okay, thanks. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt items three through six.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number seven, Phil Beck is going to walk us through, this is a resolution related to the variable message signage system down on the banks. Phil?
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Phil Beck, Construction Executive. This is for, so I start with the banks is the location. The greater project has been termed variable message signage. This is phase three of three phases. The finals, the final phase where we bring this messaging to patrons into the garage. So they've exited the. So they've exited the interstate, looking at our signs that we've already installed. They've driven the city streets, they see our signage out in front of the entrances. Now they just paid, the gate arm goes up and they go in. The sign outside said 200 spaces available, but sometimes it's hard to find those. So this is the parking guidance portion of the system. So when you pull in, there'll be red light, green light, blue light system throughout the 4,500 space garage, and if you see nothing but red lights, that's because the 200 spaces are upstairs. So there will be additional signage that tells you where the ramp is and gets you to that open spot as soon as possible. So if you recall, the county was successful with OKI for a 5.5 million dollar grant. OKI pays 80% of those construction costs. That happened earlier last year, last June, the board passed the, entering into the local public agency agreement with OKI and ODOT to administer this project, and between that time and today, we have defined what the scope is, went through an RFQ process, shortlisted, went through an RFP process, and received proposals for that. So this is recommending award to TKH Security, Inc. as a design-build entity on behalf of the county.
Quick question. When you say as a design bill, can you explain that for signage, just kind of?
Yes, so we have defined the scope. We have defined the type of technology that we would like to use inside the garage, but we have not picked a specific system because that is vendor-specific. Every vendor has a different style of system. So that was a process that we went through. TKH Security, Inc. fulfills all of the requirements of our defined scope. So they will take our general approach and they will design it, and which will be approved by the county and ODOT, and then they will construct it. The entire schedule is approximately 300 days.
Got you. And I've got to ask again, because we got these other signs that are, you know, some of them broke down with less than a year. Is this, how would this be a little different in your?
This, eventually those signs will work. We're still chasing that down. It's there under warranty.
That's a long chain.
We've put that, we've put that company on notice. These will be tied in with those signs. So the, the theory is if the sign out front says 200 spaces available, when you pull in, the gate arm goes up, you're driving around, once you pull into a space and that space turns from green to red, the sign out front changes to 199. So it automatically reflects that, and as that count goes closer to zero at a predefined number, then that in turn will trip signage out on the city streets that will point you towards different entrances into the garage, so that they're not pointing you towards an entrance that is already approaching full.
Yeah, no, I love the concept. I was just wondering, those signs, will that hold us up in any way, the ones that you're chasing down?
No.
Okay, we'll still be able to move forward.
Yes.
Great. Vice President Drehouse.
No questions.
No questions.
I got one more question though. Mr. Aludo, we had asked, I had asked rather, about, not particularly the technology, that's, that's fine, but about certain concerts in certain places. We were getting complaints, we shut down the garage. I've been to some of those, but then I go to other concerts and, you know, same place, Heritage Bank, same amount of people, you know, they got, they got a set amount of people that could fit in there. All of a sudden, the whole, you could drive through the whole garage we have, but where we had certain concerts, then we only got, you know, cram in and, you know, go somewhere else, and you said you were going to check on that. I don't know if any.
Yeah, so we, we have checked on that. I think it probably, we might be able to hit this in one of a couple of ways, because it does relate to the, the procedures in our stadium and parking department in terms of how they check on the expected attendance at an, at an event, and then what gates they open up, what floors of a certain facility they open up, et cetera. So stadium parking is due to actually give a, an updated and upcoming staff meeting. We can talk about it there. We can do individual meetings to, to talk about that as well. Just depends upon your, your preference. Happy to do either.
Yeah, no, I might, I mean, maybe a staff meeting.
Okay, because they're due to give their annual.
People were asking, and I was asking, I went to New Edition and they done sold the place out, and it was, you know, limited. And then I go to something else, and it sold the place out, and I can drive from Heritage Bank all the way to Bengals Stadium and gone through their garage.
Yeah, so they're, they're getting ready to give their annual report to, sometime over the next couple of months, we were going to have them, and to give an annual report to the board, so we can put that as a question for them to answer and respond to then. But I did, I have followed up with them and they've, it's probably more than I can go into right now on the dates.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was a part, because we're going to do the red light, green light, go. I don't want the red, green changing for certain things, and then other things, it's more open, because like you said, it's going to be based on how many spaces they open up or allow for the particular events. So I just wanted to make sure of that. But I love this, so you don't have to ride all around trying to find a space, and there's no spaces. That makes us very smart, so, thank you. I make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we have a property disposition resolution that Holly will walk us through related to DDS.
Great. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The board owns property at 4289 Westwood Northern Boulevard that includes an existing eight-bed group home that's leased and operated by Tordes Independence, which is a private nonprofit agency that provides housing, day service, and transportation services to people with disabilities. As Mr. Aludo mentioned, Hamilton County DDS manages this lease on behalf of the board, and Tordes Independence stated several, well, almost a year ago now, they would, their interest in acquiring the western portion of that property to build a new eight-bed group home that they would own and operate. They would continue as well to lease and operate the adjacent county-owned group home on that site. This total project cost is estimated to be 1.1 million. The price of the property sale is $66,400. So the resolution before you today declares the property is no longer needed for public purpose, transfers it to DDS, which is required by the Ohio Revised Code, and authorizes and approves a property sale agreement with DDS and Tordes Independence. Hamilton County DDS Board has already approved and signed off on this agreement. And we also have Mark Schlotter here, CEO of Tordes Independence, if there's any questions or if you'd like to make any additional comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions. I just want to say that, that DDS is recommending this is important for me, and so I'm happy to support this in light of the fact that they are advising that we do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Happy to support.
Awesome. Well, we're going to go ahead and support it. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Harry Blanton is here. We've talked about this item before. This is the McCloskey Economic Development Incentive Package, so, Harry?
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Harry Blanton with the Economic Development Office. As Jeff mentioned, we were back here in April at a staff meeting where we presented this agreement to you with the community investment area. During that presentation, it became kind of obvious to us that there was a little confusion between the company and us about 125 jobs being created, so we wanted to pull it from the agenda, have a conversation with them to make sure that we all understood, but to give you a review of the, the project and then to talk about that issue. So they're proposing to demolish a vacant JCPenney in Sims Township, and then to build a new headquarters with 125 new jobs that pay $75,000 average salary. It's going to be a 100,000-square-foot building that costs $33 million. Now, on the 125 new jobs, in their application, they put that they were creating 125 new jobs, and that is accurate, but there's a part of the Ohio Revised Code that says that if you relocate any jobs from somewhere in Ohio to another place, you have to either get a relocation waiver from the state of Ohio to prove that it's necessary, or you have to agree to backfill those jobs where they currently are. So what we understood after our discussion with them after that meeting is that a few of these jobs are coming from Loveland or Deafville Township, but they have committed to backfill those jobs in those locations, so there's no requirement for a relocation waiver. And in your packet, if you want to see the language that addresses that, it's on page two of the enterprise, I mean CRA agreement. There's three whereas clauses where it talks about the number of jobs in each location and that they are committing to backfilling all of those jobs. So we want to make sure that there was no problems with this going forward. That's why we pulled it from the agenda, and the company is committing to, to creating all of those jobs and backfilling the ones from the other locations. So we just wanted to give you that explanation, and now we're here before you to try and get some.
Okay. Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
No questions.
All right. I make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I think we're on to MSD.
Yes. Back again. We have five items on your regular agenda today. The first three are very similar, so I can summarize those together if that's acceptable. These are resolutions to authorize and fund design for three sewer lateral assessment projects, each of which will serve a property, three total, on Struble Road in Colrain Township. House numbers 2978, 2982, and 2986. These projects will facilitate the connection of these homes to the MSD public sewer system and also facilitate the abandonment of the household sewage treatment systems that currently serve them. Each of the property owners submitted a petition requesting a sewer lateral through MSD's assessment process. The petitions are valid under our rules and regulations since they have 100% support of the property owners. MSD is requesting $60,500 in design phase funding for each of these projects, so $181,500 total for these three items. Take any questions at this time, or I can move forward?
Move forward, let me open up a question.
Item number 13, this is a resolution to confirm the final revised assessments for 15 completed local and lateral sewer projects across 23 benefited parcels that have now, now have available public sanitary sewer service. This is the last step in MSD's sewer assessment process. As we discussed during the public hearing, all these projects were initiated by petition, were designed, went through any necessary public hearing, and have been instructed, and we are at the point where project costs, or a portion of the project costs are to be assessed to the benefited properties. With the $12,000 cap on assessments for this year, 22% of the total project costs, approximately $275,000, will be paid by the benefited property owners as a whole through this assessment, and 78% will be funded by MSD, approximately $1.7 million. All parcels except one will be assessed, the $12,000 amount. One lateral sewer project had costs low enough that it reduced the amount being assessed under 12,000. It's approximately 9,000. And additionally, as I referenced earlier, four of the properties that were benefited by the Parakeet Local Sewer Project did qualify for CDBG funds, so will be receiving those in an amount up to $6,000 to offset their $12,000 assessment amount. If this resolution is adopted, MSD will send invoices for the assessed amounts to the property owners by certified mail. We sent out an early warning letter back in March in addition to the various communications we have throughout the project, so this shouldn't come as a surprise. They should be expecting this invoice at this time. And there will be a 30-day collection period in which they can pay as much or as little of the invoiced amount, and then the unpaid balance will be paid through property taxes over 20 years in 40 semi-annual payments with interest and fees. Can I move forward to item 14 if you'd like?
Yes.
Okay. This last one is a resolution to authorize certification of delinquent MSD sewer charges in the amount of $250,153.3 against a property parcel located at 35 West Fifth Street in the city of Cincinnati. The board previously authorized certification of a little over $100 million in delinquent MSD charges against three of the parcels at that location. These prior assessments have been paid in full through the property taxes, so it was a successful collection effort. And two of the three parcels are now completely current on all MSD sewer charges. The amount we're seeking to certify today was incurred by the remaining parcel between approximately June and October of 2022, and is currently delinquent. MSD recommends and requests adoption in order to ensure that this debt is secured against the property and better increases our chance, chances of collecting it. Take any questions at this time?
Yes. Vice President.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas. Well, I just noticed I have one comment. 10, 11, 12, you did give the total of that amount, but I think you just misstated it. As you said, 121,500, and it should be 181,500. So it's on here, 60,500 each.
For each?
Yes, but you said 121,500.
I apologize, thank you for, but it is 60,500 each, correct? Thank you.
That's all I have. Sorry. Just had a question. On these parcels, is this a residential or commercial?
On the assessment, the laterals?
Delinquent.
Oh, the delinquent. It is a, it's the Netherlands Hotel, so I believe, commercial.
Okay, I was, I had a conversation, certainly want to keep the Netherlands, but we have, I mean, they getting a lot of breaks in terms of, I mean, no average citizen would get that type of break. I mean, you miss a month, and you're, you know, two months, you guys are out there cutting everybody off. I just wanted to think, we got to have one set of rules. We appreciate them trying to pay the bill, but, you know, if you're a small business or you, you know, you have a home, you make a, you miss a payment, they run out with your little thing, I don't even know if they put it on your door anymore. They cutting it off by a hit of a button. So I just want to, I think we need to step it up so that, you know, we can't give one group, you know, an eternity to pay, and another, you know, the average citizen, they get 30 days or 90 days, and they out without any waters off or whatever, you know, it's off. So I just want to put that out there. I don't know how we remedy that, Mr. Aludo, but we got to step it up a little bit.
Yeah, I know that our, the prosecutor's offices and discussions with the Netherlands specifically as it relates to things like occupancy taxes where the county has direct control over that, and there has, they have gotten back on track with that. There's still some back charges that we're negotiating, but we're happy to follow up on process with Water Works as well to see what their procedures are here.
Yeah, and I just want to say MSD, if we going up on the people's rates, maybe if we collect some of this money, we can keep the people rate down. Because I just, every time I look up, they getting an extra break. We got people over at the courthouse right now, you know, getting ready to lose everything. So I don't know, how can we, Diana, the rector, first thing, how can we put some, a little more heat on, on these folks?
So your point is well-taken, first of all, and they have paid the previous amount that was certified to the, to the property, so that is paid for, and the good news is that they are current and paying their current charges that they're incurring. As I mentioned, I mean, this is really all being triggered by the fact that they are in a pending foreclosure action, so a receiver has been appointed to, who is keeping the current bills charged, or I'm sorry, paid. But there is a period of time between the last time the board assessed that amount and the point at which the appointer was, I'm sorry, the receiver was appointed, so that's the amount that we are seeking to certify, and we are hopeful this is the last time we have to come forth with, with legislation on this property dealing with their delinquent taxes.
I got you. I just, you got to see what people watching on TV saying, what in the world, every time they got time, before now, I'm saying they had time and time and time and time, and you all don't give that time to people. You kind of go after them right, you know, they ain't got much time. So I just wanted to highlight that again. So today, we will, I guess, put our foot down for you to try to collect those, right? Is that what we're doing?
That's what we're recommending, yes. Thank you.
I make a motion then to adopt items 10 through 14.
Second. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aludo, the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam President, which is, uh, for a change, much smaller than the regular agenda. Uh, we have item number 15, which is a resolution authorizing a bid for, uh, fire hydrant replacement parts at 285,000. Uh, we have a resol, a resolution authorizing a grant with the city of Redding, uh, for, uh, public recycling containers, uh, for $15,000. And we have an independent living services contract, uh, with Habitat for Excellence with, uh, for job and family services. The administration recommends approval. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Vice President Drehouse?
No questions.
Commissioner Dimas?
No questions.
I make a motion to approve item 15 through 17.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
We got a by leave. Do I make this by leave 2A or just by leave 2 still?
Two.
Okay. Uh, by leave 2 has, uh, been corrected, uh, regarding Juneteenth. And, uh, we're recommending that it, the flag be flown at all of our county buildings, uh, if we, based on our supply that we have available. I make a motion to approve by leave 2.
Commissioner Dimas, do you wanna second this?
Second, thank you. Sorry, I should...
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, now, we have, uh... We have two executive sessions. I got an old agenda, so I need a new agenda. We got, we have one, but one executive session. Now we got two. Okay, here we go. Thank you. Uh, I make a motion to go on executive session pursuant to RC Section 121, 22G2 to consider the sale or disposition of property in an executive session. 121, 22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for public body concerning MSD.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.